Hallelujah, hallelujah, we pray for this special meeting, we pray for the Lord. When you come to us, we pray that you will be with us in our daily lives. We pray that you will receive our blessings. We pray for the Lord. While I was driving, I thought, “What is this?”, “What are the blessings of God in our lives?” Hallelujah, he is our God who has brought us here. Hallelujah, you should think about it, you should look at all the blessings he has brought us. Hallelujah, when you see him, you should praise him. He is the good God that has brought us here. Hallelujah, when you see him, you should praise him. All the blessings have been blessed by him. He is the God who has protected us from the darkness. Hallelujah, when you come to us, we pray that you will be with us in our daily lives. We pray that you will be with us in our daily lives. We pray that you will be with us in our daily lives. We pray that you will be with us in our daily lives. Hallelujah, we pray that you will be with us in our daily lives. We pray that you will be with us in our daily lives. We pray that you will be with us in our daily lives. We pray that you will be with us in our daily lives. Hallelujah, when you see him, you should praise him. Hallelujah, when you see him, you should praise him. Hallelujah, when you see him, you should praise him. Hallelujah, when you see him, you should praise him. Hallelujah, when you see him, you should praise him. Hallelujah, when you see him, you should praise him. Hallelujah, when you see him, you should praise him. The Lord has blessed you. When you come to us, we pray that you will be with us in our daily lives. We pray that you will be with us in our daily lives. We pray that you will be with us in our daily lives. We pray that you will be with us in our daily lives. We pray that you will be with us in our daily lives. We pray that you will be with us in our daily lives. We pray that you will be with us in our daily lives. We pray that you will be with us in our daily lives. We pray that you will be with us in our daily lives. We pray that you will be with us in our daily lives. We pray that you will be with us in our daily lives. We pray that you will be with us in our daily lives. Hallelujah, when you see him, you should praise him. We pray that you will be with us in our daily lives. During the special meeting, we pray that you will be with us in our daily lives. We pray that you will be with us in our daily lives.
If you are able to, can we rise in the presence of the Almighty God this evening time? In Ecclesiastes 3:11, it says, “He has made everything beautiful in His time.” He has also said eternity in the human heart, yet no one can fathom what God has done from beginning to end, church. I don’t know what you’re praying for this evening time, but let me tell you, He’s not done. The same way you can’t fathom eternity is the same way we can’t fathom what God’s doing behind the scenes. Church, you may be waiting on the answer, but I promise you, there is a God that’s working in the background. Church, your answer is still on the way, and it’s coming in a beautiful time. Church, your time may not be coincided with His time, but I promise you, His time is much better. Church, your answer is coming. Whatever you’re praying for, it’s on the way. And if you believe that, receive that this evening time. Declare it, “My answer is coming.” Church, if you believe that, shout that this evening time. “My answer is coming.” My God has not forgotten me. My answer is coming. I wish that every day was happy and the sun would always shine. But sometimes clouds come without warning, they catch us by surprise. Or right when life gets so frustrating, before I sing the blues. I remember that you’re God, and it’s not too big for you. I’m standing on your word, I’m holding on to my faith. I’m pressing towards the mark, I don’t believe it’s too late. I’m standing on your word, I’m holding on to my faith. I’m pressing towards the mark, I don’t believe it’s too late. Because there’s no such thing as too late. With you, there’s no such thing as too late. With you, there’s no such thing as too late. With you, there’s no such thing as too late. Oh, there’s no such thing as too late. With you, there’s no such thing as too late. With you, there’s no such thing as too late. With you, there’s no such thing as too late. He is the substance of what’s hopeful, it’s what you cannot see. I know you’ve got a bad report, but whose report will you believe? The way I’m acting may surprise you, and my smile may not make sense. You’re only seeing how it started, just wait till the end. I’m standing on your word, I’m holding on to my faith. I’m pressing towards the mark, I don’t believe it’s too late. I’m standing on your word, I’m holding on to my faith. I’m pressing towards the mark, I don’t believe it’s too late. Oh, I’m standing on your word, I’m holding on to my faith. I’m pressing towards the mark, I don’t believe it’s too late. I’m standing on your word, I’m holding on to my faith. I’m pressing towards the mark, I don’t believe it’s too late. There’s no such thing as too late. With you, there’s no such thing as too late. With you, there’s no such thing as too late. With you, there’s no such thing as too late. Oh, there’s no such thing as too late. With you, there’s no such thing as too late. With you, there’s no such thing as too late. There’s no such thing as too late. And I know, I’m a miracle worker. Oh, I know, you are a miracle worker. Oh, I know, I’m a miracle worker. Oh, I know, I’m a miracle worker. Oh, I’m standing on your word, I’m holding on to my faith. I’m pressing towards the mark, I don’t believe it’s too late. I’m standing on your word, I’m holding on to my faith. I’m pressing towards the mark, I don’t believe it’s too late. Oh, because I know, I’m a miracle worker. Oh, I know, you are a miracle worker. Oh, I know, you are a miracle worker. Oh, I know, you are a miracle worker. Oh, I’m standing on your word, I’m holding on to my faith. I’m pressing towards the mark, I don’t believe it’s too late. I’m standing on your word, I don’t believe it’s too late. Oh, I’m pressing towards the mark, I don’t believe it’s too late. Because there’s no such thing as too late. With you, there’s no such thing as too late. With you, there’s no such thing as too late. With you, there’s no such thing as too late. Oh, there’s no such thing as too late. With you, there’s no such thing as too late. With you, there’s no such thing as too late. With you, there’s no such thing as too late. Because I know, you are a miracle worker. Oh, I know, you are a miracle worker. I know, you are a miracle worker. Oh, I know, you are a miracle worker. Declare it, oh, I know, you are a miracle worker. 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 I’m standing on your word, I’m holding on to my faith. I’m pressing towards the mark, I don’t believe it’s too late. I’m standing on your word, I’m holding on to my faith. I’m pressing towards the mark, I don’t believe it’s too late. Because there’s no such thing as too late. With you, there’s no such thing as too late. With you, there’s no such thing as too late. With you, there’s no such thing as too late. Because there’s no such thing as too, no such thing as too. Oh, there’s no such thing as too late. With you, there’s no such thing as too late. Because I know, you are a miracle worker. Oh, I know, you are a miracle worker. That’s my promise. Oh, I know, you are a miracle worker. I know, you are a miracle worker. Sing it again. I know, you are a miracle worker. Oh, I know, you are a miracle worker. I know, yes, you are a miracle worker. Oh, my God is, my God is a miracle worker. I’m standing on your word, I’m holding on to my faith. I’m pressing towards the mark, I don’t believe it’s too late. I’m standing on your word, I’m holding on to my faith. I’m pressing towards the mark, I don’t believe it’s too late. Oh, I’m standing on your word, I’m holding on to my faith. I’m pressing towards the mark, I don’t believe it’s too late. I’m standing on your word, I’m holding on to my faith. I’m pressing towards the mark, I don’t believe it’s too late. Because there’s no such thing as too late. With you, there’s no such thing as too late. With you, there’s no such thing as too late. With you, there’s no such thing as too late. No, there’s no such thing, no such thing, no. No such thing, no. Too late. With you, there’s no such thing as too late. Because I know, you are a miracle worker. Oh, I know, oh, you’re a miracle worker. Oh, I know, you are a miracle worker. Oh, I know, you are a miracle worker. I’m standing on your word, I’m holding on to my faith. I’m pressing towards the mark, I don’t believe it’s too late. I’m standing on your word, oh, I’m holding on to my faith. I’m pressing towards the mark, I don’t believe it’s too late.
You are here, you’re moving in a mist. I worship you, I worship you. You are here, you’re working in this place. I worship you, I worship you. You are here, you’re moving in this place. I worship you, I worship you. You are here, you’re working in this place. I worship you, I worship you. You are way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness. My God, that is who you are. You are way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness. My God, that is who you are. You are here, you’re touching every heart. I worship you, I worship you. You are here, you’re healing every heart. I worship you, I worship you. You are way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness. My God, that is who you are. You are way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness. My God, that is who you are. 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 You are way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness. My God, that is who you are. Sing it out. Way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness. My God, that is who you are. You are way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness. My God, that is who you are. You are way maker. Way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness. My God, that is who you are. Even when I don’t see it, you’re working. Even when I don’t feel it, you’re working. You never stop, you never stop working. You never stop, you never stop working. Even when I don’t see it, you’re working. Even when I don’t feel it, you’re working. You never stop, you never stop working. You never stop, you never stop working. Even when I don’t see it, you’re working. Even when I don’t feel it, you’re working. You never stop, you never stop working. You never stop, you never stop working. Even when I don’t see it, you’re working. Even when I don’t feel it, you’re working. You never stop, you never stop working. You never stop, you never stop. Way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness. My God, that is who you are. Way maker. Way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness. My God, that is who you are. 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 Way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness. My God, that is who you are. You are way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness. My God, that is who you are. Way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness. My God, that is who you are. Sing it out from your heart. Way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness. My God, that is who you are. 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 Way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness. My God, that is who you are. Let’s sing it out. Oh, he’s a way maker. Way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness. My God, that is who you are. Let’s sing it one more time. Who you are. Way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness. My God, that is who you are. Even when I don’t see it, you’re working. Even when I don’t feel it, you’re working. You never stop, you never stop working. You never stop, you never stop working. Oh, even when I don’t see it, you’re working. Even when I don’t feel it, you’re working. You never stop, you never stop working. Never stop, you never stop working. Even when I don’t see it, you’re working. Even when I don’t feel it, you’re working. She’s working all over your situation right now. The walls are coming down and chains are being broken. Oh, even when I don’t see it, you’re working. Even when I don’t feel it, you’re working. You never stop, you never stop working. You never stop, you never stop. Way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness. My God, that is who you are. That is who you are. You are way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness. Oh, that is who you are. That is who you are. Yes, you are. My keeper, my protector, my savior. Oh, that is who you are. Oh, that is who you are.
Church, the Holy Spirit is speaking on me right now, and I feel like I’m, I have to say this to you. But the Lord is telling me that there is someone in this room who has been praying for something for so, for a very long time, and who feels like they haven’t received an answer yet. The Holy Spirit is speaking to you through this song, saying that He is way maker, and that He is a miracle worker, and that even in the darkest of times, even if you are not able to see it, the Lord is telling you right now that He is working on it. This is your reminder, this is your promise. Hold on to this promise, because the Lord has put it in my heart, that He is working on exactly what you are asking for. He is working on that promise, and that He will keep that promise. Can you sing that verse again? Can we sing that verse again?
Even when I don't see it, you're working. Even when I don't feel it, you're working. You never stop, you never stop working.
As you sing this, please sing it with the heart of worship. Believe when you are singing because the Lord is saying this to you. The Lord is telling you that even when you don't see it, He is working.
You never stop, you never stop working. You never stop, you never stop working. Way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness, my God, that is who you are. You are way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness, my God, that is who you are. That is who you are, 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 that is who you are. That is who you are, that is who you are.
Hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah, you may be seated, please. Hallelujah. Parimithigalilathay. Parimithigalilathay pravartikivann kadivula devam. Ilogathinde asrayagendrungal kaparimithigalonda. Hallelujah. Hallelujah, averkuparimithigalonda naali. Hallelujah. Hallelujah, namadavishenngalde indantcity. Avinu vishemala. Hallelujah, parimithigalilathay. Hallelujah, etradhurathilaanan engaldevishemengil. Adindameela ranguvan kadivula devataya namaraadikinnada namsevikinnada. Inna hallelujah, iasandhyasamayata. Avandasaanithi avanipuvikinnava. Hallelujah. Hallelujah, avandasaanithi manipuvichariyana varalpanerana vudheyvatiyandus thudikiam. Hallelujah. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. Apa stotram, 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 stutiyapa. Hallelujah. Nilla studdikinnadeyome, hallelujah. Niyankal kapudvaigala thurnanana nalladeyoma agyal ninastuddikinnapa. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Nityajeevaneniyankal katanna krbeekai stotramnada. Indraatri kaala ndayome nyangalanitthikivendi oripunakrbeekai stotram. Hallelujah. Prarthanikaai namukkadeyavaranlekinamethane elpikiam. Hallelujah. Indraatri kaalta meetinga twanigiraramai tiruwan. Devatinde vajana matichakthamae namaloda edabaduwanthakavannam. Devagaranlekinammy oridhre samarpikiam. Hallelujah. Devanamaloda edabadumaraagatay. Devatinde valiya krbea. Devatinde valiya bishagatal. Hallelujah, devadasan susrujikivan. Devagaranlekinelpichundu namukkuprathikiam. Allavirum devates thudichaprathichundrikimbooradhi maite vinoyijayam minootake gaddanuvan. Prathikimadani chesham pastor Paul John namlo prathikinada.
Praise the Lord, namukkuprathikiam. Devame stotram, 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 stotram. Convention sugividaave. Devame ratrikaalangarthaave adingal. Angeda sanidilekarthaave gaddanuvirunarthaave. Anganaduthanavadiyalkai karthaan nyangalanyastuddikinnas stotramcheynarthaave. Indraatrielkarthaave. Conventionai karthaave adingal karthaave. Vurakadunuvan devame angasai chirkthaave. Devame anganaduthanavadiyalkai karthaan nyangalanyastuddikinnarthaave. Angaya aradipan karthaave, angystudipan. Devame stotram karthaave. Ange paa listudipan. Devame adingalkana krubalkai karthaan nyangalanyastuddikinnarthaave. Itradhola adingale kathuparivalichirthaave. Iraatrikaanuvaan karthaave adingalesai chenai karthaan nyangalanyastuddikinnarthaave. Devame stotram karthaave. Ibu umidavarepkarthaave. Jeevamudase shipikinnan adingale karthaave. Devame angikoriparposundanarthaave adingalariyinarthaave. Devame indraatrielkarthaave. Adingal pinayadugarthaave. Arunjuundugarthaave angeda sanidile ayrikinarthaave. Angeda krubarthaave adingalodugudi erikana meenuprathikinnarthaave. Devame stotram karthaave. Isabeyordu prathikinnarthaave. Devame convention karthaave. Oranigrahamaari paa. Devame deshatte noor anigrahamaari paa karthaave. Angasai chenameenuprathikinnarthaave. Devame stotram karthaave. Devame ivrisusrujikinnella karangalain karthaave. Ella devame adasan marain karthaave. Angeda karangalailpikinnarthaave. Angasai chenameenarthaave. Devame stotram karthaave. Isabeyordu prathikinnarthaave. Angarthaave. Sabagarthaave oranigrahamaakittirkanameenuprathikinnarthaave. Devame innavanoridhrengarthaave. Devame anigrahampravichirthaave. Devame maragipovvaan devame saai chenameenuprathikinnarthaave. Belathodarthaave. Sandoshthodarthaave. Somadhanathodarthaave. Devame maragipovvaan devame saai chenameenuprathikinnarthaave. Angelindupravichundugarthaave. Devame maragipovvaan devamedingalesai chenameenuprathikinnarthaave. Devame innavatarkasusrujelkarthaave. Devame angeda vajanasusrujikinnan angeda dasan karthaave. Pasranisela parayordu prathikidho. Anga belappadthanameenuprathikinnarthaave. Arugithodobelathodaninarthaave. Angeda vajanasusrujipan. Devame angasai chenameen. Angeda parishudhatmaanal naruniarthaave. Adingalkuvendunavajanangarthaave. Angeda dasanalkudisrevipan devamedingalesai chenameenuprathikinnarthaave. Angeda dasandasusrujinkarthaave. Etto anigrahamaari paa devame saai chenameen. Devamedingale allavire tath samarpikinnarthaave. Andhittholangarthaave, avsana tholangarthaave. Angeda sana dindanarthaave. Adingalanyanigrahikana meenuprathikinnarthaave. Tathisamarpikinnuprathrananastotram. Esu vinnamthane, amen.
Praise God, praise God. Let us look unto Him in prayer once again this evening. Father God, once again, we thank you for this evening, God. Thank you for bringing us to this special day convention for the second night, oh God. Thank you, God, for being good to us during the day. Thank you for helping us throughout the day, God. And as we are here in your presence, we pray that you help us, oh God. Hallelujah. Thank you for allowing us to worship you by singing beautiful songs, oh God. We sang, hallelujah, that you are the way maker, hallelujah. You are the promise keeper. You are the light in the darkness, hallelujah. That's the God who you are, hallelujah. When there is no way, you make a way for us. When things are impossible for us, you may do miracles for us, hallelujah. The promise keeping God, we thank you this evening time. Thank you for being faithful to each and every one of us. We give all of us into your hands this evening time, especially this meeting into your hands, oh God. We thank you for Zion Church, oh God, hallelujah. For the ministers who minister here, for the musicians who minister here, oh God, and for all your children. We bless them all in your name, hallelujah. And as they are here, we pray that you minister through them into this city, oh God, into this neighborhood, oh God. Let them be a blessing, hallelujah, to everyone around here. Especially, we pray for the special meeting, God. We pray for your anointed servant, Pastor Anish Elapara, oh God. God, we give him to your hands tonight. We pray that you speak through him once again, hallelujah. The God who spoke to us yesterday, he's the same God who can minister to us today, hallelujah. So we give him your servant into your hands. We pray for all his ministries, hallelujah. Thank you for using him powerfully during this age, oh God. We pray for his family. We bless them all in your name. Once again, we give everything into your hands. We pray that you help us tonight, oh God. Speak to us tonight. Touch us tonight. Challenge us tonight. Revive us tonight, oh God. We thank you for everything. We thank you for hearing our prayer. In Jesus' precious name we pray, amen.
Praise God, hallelujah. Sandoshamolavarkarangalayorti devatayandus thudikiam. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Alpanerangudu namaraadhanikaai samayate elpikia anamali alambadugal paadi devate thudikiam.
Hallelujah. Manoharamaya santhyasamay. Devatinde paktanmaar, vichathanmaar, vichathamadigal. Makhayevarkandevasanidil orium michikadunaviruvan. Amadusuvashaktanaai devatyaradipan. Karthaav jeevatil nallasamayate namukkinalkitanadanaai. Devatayorikakuudinamni odas thudikiam. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Devabajanubharayinou nam bhagya mulavaraan. Bhagya mulavara. Ame nam ideshatte vannadalanaamuday bhagyatanakarana. Namukkinalidu joliyo sambadhimoo undaikalala nam bhagivanmara idikinnadana karana. Thirivajnambulichu varayinou. Yehova akrittam kanakidathamanishen bhagiva. Atmaavil kabadamillathamanishen bhagiva. Lenkanam xemichut paavatay marachum kitthiyamanishen bhagiva. Rashima mama rakana talavava. Raksheeda sandoshamindraatrikaala etradharaanipuvikinnanda. Ame hallelujah, orikali yova varnyu. Enikorupahygalam undaideruno, orisupagalam. Ebaideruno akalam. Ame yehoveda belicham endetalekemi de prakashichana. Avinda belichathalkudi, an iduttilan, nan. Ah belichamukandram idutalkoodinadana. Yehoveda sakhyada endekoodaratthini chutthum undaiderunana. Nan bhagiva, amanishambulichu varayinou. Indraatrikaala priyamulavari. Raksheeda sandoshatani puvikinnava. Karangaluvarthiyunadevate namni odas thudichim. Hallelujah. Esu endasvandamai thirunadana, ende bhagyaam. Ame nan abandehai thirunadana, ende bhagyaam. Endepattum, endapreshamsayum. Avanmathram devagunyadum tanndakurishumanandha preshamsa. I boast in the grace of the Lord. I boast in his cross. Hallelujah. Parayurimalala gaalam esu endasvandam. Hallelujah. Endudabhagyaam chullikkuda. Enakana atmaathamaai namukkupadidheyvate namni odas thudikiam. Hallelujah.
Esu endasvandam, hallelujah. Kandhalum sarvam pudiyaada.
Orikakoodi.
Esu endasvandam, hallelujah. Kandhalum sarvam pudiyaada. Enikyu pathum preshamsayum.
Karangaluvarthi.
Enikyu pathum preshamsayum. Esu endasvandam, hallelujah. Tirdu endanandham neegiravum. Irutpin paasham aruttuada. Jeeval prakasham kaadundunya. Enikyu pathum preshamsayum. Enikyu pathum preshamsayum. Esu endasvandam, hallelujah.
Adayushama. Ame raksheedupakadani cheshakana. Ame hallelujah, chitragal sorakanturamadha karanada. Ame nadinumundha, ame idutinda paashangalal bentikkepatavana idikinnanandangil. Nindammarana paashatthay, nindaidutinda paashatthay aduchayinachesham. Neenne kani kinnakai shagal, thurammaswarakathinda kai shagala. Rashima mama, ri mama.
Enikyu pathum preshamsayum. Esu endasvandam, hallelujah. Paada nennimbom pora enma. Jeevande velam taadupina. Jeevande appam enshaktikya. Enikyu pathum preshamsayum. Enikyu pathum preshamsayum. Esu endasvandam, hallelujah. Isneha bendham nilkum sadha.
Orikakoodi.
Esu endasvandam, hallelujah. Isneha bendham nilkum sadha. Enikyu pathum preshamsayum. Enikyu pathum preshamsayum.
Kada.
Kurishum. Enikyu pathum preshamsayum. Enikyu pathum preshamsayum.
This is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior all the day long. This is my story. This is my song. Praising my Savior all the day long. This is my story. This is my song.
This is my story.
Praising my Savior all the day long. This is my story. This is my song.
If you ask me, if you ask me to say something else, I don't have anything else to say. Because this is my story.
Praising my Savior all the day long. Praising my Savior.
Praising my Savior all the day long
हलेलुया इधान इन्हें प्रश्न हमें देवगुण्याडा इन्हें प्रश्न अविन्त घूषा इन्हें प्रश्न I have nothing else to boast रशिमा को तलावा This is my story If this is my song
This is my song
हलेलुया योर गान गुड चर्ना पाड़िदेवते आराधिक हमें वजन बरे योहोवा नम्मुर पक्षतिल आइरुन्न नाम शत्रु इन्हें पल्लिन इरयाई तीर्ण अविन्त नम्मे वेगतिल विजिंगी कलयुग रशिमा मारकना तलावा एशु इन्हें सानित्यम उन्नाइरुन्न इन्हीं पगलकाल जीवन ओढ़े इवन निलकिन्न इल्लेंगे शत्रु विजिंगी कलयुग वेलम प्राणन मीधे कभी भाइरुन्न रशिमा तलावा चिलतनकी मधिन वेच्चमन निने सुखित ओ री मारकना नंगल इधु वरे यत्तुवा नी मात्रम एन देवमे नगान चर्न पाड़िदेवते आराधिक हलेलुया Thank you Lord दुरुद्धि निकिन्न आई स्तोत्र करिबल्लपा निंद कुबया गत बलमल्ल एशु निंद देय आदु
नंगल इधु वरे यत्तुवा नी मात्रम एन देवमे नंगल इधु वरे यत्तुवा नी मात्रम एन देवमे
वरिक कोडी
नंगल इधु वरे यत्तुवा नी मात्रम एन देवमे नंगल इधु वरे यत्तुवा नी मात्रम एन एशु करिवल्ला तिन कुबया ने बलमल्ला तिन दय आने करिवल्ला तिन कुबया ने बलमल्ला तिन दय आने नंगल इधु वरे यत्तुवा नी मात्रम एन देवमे नंगल इधु वरे यत्तुवा नी मात्रम एन एशु डोगियाई मारिया पो यहो राफयाई डोगियाई मारिया पो यहो राफयाई ओरियल मर्न देय यहो वनिसिया ओ तोरियल मर्न देय ओ यहो वनिसिया करिवल्ला तिन कुबया ने बलमल्ला तिन दय आने एन करिवल्ला तिन कुबया ने बलमल्ला तिन दय आने नंगल इधु वरे यत्तुवा
कुन्यों लक्ष्य अड्डे हमें माता भिन्न ग्लाबरी चर्त्त पिटिच्च निरुद्ध योहोवेर संगति चर्नोष तोड़े बाड़िक कंट्रोल चर्त्त पिटिच्च निरुद्ध कलन अप्पल बिनो येति पापा इन्न कई वल्लग पापा इन्न बलमल्लग अप्पन्न कुबया स्वर्गतिन्न अप्पन्न कुबया
आग्यदगल मारिपोई एशनाई गूरयुल्ला पो अस्साग्यदगल मारिपोई एबने सरन देवमे इन्हें करिंगलिल वहिच्चवनी करिवल्ला तिन कुबया ने सदमल्ला तिन दय आने ओ करिवल्ला तिन कुबया ने सदमल्ला तिन दय आने ओ करिवल्ला तिन कुबया ने बलमल्ला तिन दय आने नंगल इधु वरे यत्तुवा नी मात्रम एन देवमे नंगल इधु वरे यत्तुवा नी मात्रम एन एशु एन माई रयाई एन से नान देव यहोवा इरयाई एन शून्यदगल माटियलो एप्पोडुन इन्हें काढन्ना एलरोही एन सिरकोडी एप्पोडुन इन्हें काढन्ना एलरोही एन सिरकोडी करिवल्ला तिन कुबया ने सयमल्ला तिन दय आने करिवल्ला तिन कुबया ने सयमल्ला तिन दय आने नंगल इधु वरे यत्तुवा नी मात्रम एन देवमे नंगल इधु वरे यत्तुवा नी मात्रम एन एशु नंगल इधु वरे यत्तुवा नी मात्रम एन देवमे नंगल इधु वरे यत्तुवा
नज्जा गुणात पाड़ नज्जा गुणात पाड़ वरे इन्न कई वन्न इन्न बलमल्ल इन्न पापा इन्न कुबया इन्न पापा इन्न कुबया
बलमल्ला तिन दय आने करिवल्ला तिन कुबया ने बलमल्ला तिन दय आने ओ करिवल्ला तिन कुबया ने सदमल्ला तिन दय आने नंगल इधु वरे यत्तुवा नी मात्रम एन देवमे नंगल इधु वरे यत्तुवा नी मात्रम एन एशु नंगल इधु वरे यत्तुवा
रशिमा हलेलुया 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 स्वर्गम संदोषिकिन्न रात्रिकाला आइरुन्न सलमा महत्व इन्हें देवते सलेला पुगच्ची नंगल कल्ला योहोवे नंगल कल्ला रशिमा नंगल कोण्डो वन्न दुन्न यागुन्न सलमा महत्व हलेलुया नन्ने नर्द्दे तोड़ देवतिन्न संगति करिंगलू यर्थ निंगल देवुन तमिलन्न समसार पापा पापा आरु कोण्डोन्न पापा आरु कोण्डोन्न नी या कोण्डोन्न उपदव एति यद्दा नी एति चुद रशिमा हलेलुया नम्मी एशु Thank you Lord Thank you Jesus Thank you God
Praise the Lord I said praise the Lord Hallelujah Greetings to you all again this evening in the loving Precious name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ God has enabled us to come together In the house of God And Jesus himself claimed That my house Shall be called the house of Prayer Praise God So we are Come together here for one purpose To pray To pray And to worship And to seek His face And to glorify His name And His name only Praise God Tonight The most important person in the house of God Is the one who died for you Praise God There may be many lovers in this world But the love will end by the grave But there is only one who rose from the grave Praise God Who died and rose from the grave Who died for our sins Praise God If the law if the world will find about your sin No matter at any stage they will condemn you Praise God But the one who died for you When you confess, he is ready to forgive Praise God Hallelujah and I thank God he keeps it in Confidentiality to the hundred percent Praise God
इन्हीं रात्रिल नम्मुक देवसनिति प्रागल्पितोड़ देवते स्तुदिकिवान नम्मुत्पड़तुवान कर्तवरिक्य पाठ्यम नम्मुर पाबनल आर्निटु एट्टु वर्नपोल पूर्णमाई शमिच्चर कर्तवनाई नान देवतन्न स्तोत्र आदिल संदोषम इल्लेंगे नम्मुर जीवतल उन्न संदोष
Praise God
नम्मुर रक्षेर Foundation नवर्नल नम्मुर पाबशम
Praise God
नम्मुर पाबति नम्मुल उत्तरी स्तोत्र दावींदर भाषेल पर्नाल यान योहोवे काई काट गातिर अविन इंग्लिक नशरमाया कुरिय सदिकन्न नम्मुल इवन नागुडन्न कुरिय स्तोत्र अविन एने उत्तरी पेर उन्न आइरुन्न नारु केटन वन्न इन्हीं रात्रि नम्मुर मथिया विर्तपट्टन्न नम्मुल काय टिया
Praise God
अविन एने काय टी अवडन निर्त्त स्तोत्र इन्हें कालिगले अविन पारमे निर्त्त अवडन निल्ला इन्हें कमनते स्तिरमाकी अवडन निल्ला स्तोत्र नम्मुक रिकडपाड़न्न इत्र इन्हें चेदोन चय इन्हें वायल वादर नबरा ओरु पुद्वाट इन्हीं रात्रि नम्मुक करिंगलू रिच्च देवते आराधिक हलेलुया नम्मुर पाटन रात्रि नम्मुक चय
Praise God The Lord has done everything on our side But it is our role to do One thing is asking
ओर आरिम आक्रेकिन्न You should worship the Lord
Praise God
देवते नम्मुक आराधिकिन्न आरें कानिकन्न आरु नम्मुर आराध्र कंड चिरिचल बड़पल्ला स्वर्गम संदोषिकिन्न
Praise God
इन्हीं पगलकाल नम्मुक कल्लार्क नम्मु प्रसादिकिन्न एन एरिवेक्तिया नम्मुक जीवन तन्न
Praise God हलेलुया
आरु एन्नो पर्नाल स्तोत्र विषयमल्ला नान एन एन कर्तवनाई आराधिक स्तोत्र नान एन एन कर्तवनाई महुत्पड़त इन्नी संदर्प कर्तवनाई महुत्पड़त देवजनमे नम्मुक इन्हीं अंदिकालत देव उरिकिन्न विलयरिया सौपाकितन्न नान देवतन्न स्तोत्र वरिक गारियम बरे योर मरिचो विरुम माउन वर्नियो रारु एन्नो चेन्न देवते अवर्क उन्न चय गड़ियत इल्ल अवर हाउस ऑफ गॉड इन्न वन्नाल अवर कुन्न चय गड़ियत इल्ल अवर Frozen आयरिक स्तोत्र यन्ना हल जीवन अल्लोर देश नम्मुक देवन श्वासते तन्द करिमति देवते नम्मुत्पड़त ई श्वासो जीवन तन्द कर्तवनाई आराधिक
Praise the Lord
नम्मुर कुन्यों लक्ष्य गानन स्तोत्र नम्मुर फैमिली मेंबर्स लक्ष्य गानन नम्मुर चर्च मेंबर्स लक्ष्य गानन नम्मुर रिलेटिव्स लक्ष्य गानन नम्मुर सोसाइटी लक्ष्य गानन
Praise God हलेलुया You are called to worship God कन्हीरा त्रि नान चोच्चबल Do you know why are we saved? Do you know why the Lord has saved you?
चलोर बरे एनीक इन्न ब्राह्तन गुत्रंगल लेबिक नादन्नो अल्ला देव नम्मुल इदल्लम पैकेजलोल स्तोत्र सौक्यम विडल इदल्लम पैकेजलोल स्तोत्र यन्ना इदल्लम ओरिसाइडी कडक बजन बरे एशु बर्न्यू आदि एन्नो तंडे नीवी राज्य मनिषिकिन्न ओर किदल्ला लेबिक नम्मुल पलपुर नम्मुर फोकस सेकेंडरी आयपु एशु बरे गारितल मरुवो स्तोत्र इन्हीं रात्रि नम्मुर प्राइमरी गोल नम्मुर प्राइमरी कंसर्ट कर्तवाई
Praise God
किंगडम ऑफ गॉड देवर राज्य तन्न मिडिन्न इन्न बर्न नान एन्नो चेन्न स्तोत्र अदा विषय इन्हीं रात्रिल देवजनमे रण्डावत रात्रि नम्मुक वर्यवान देवते स्तुदिकिवान नम्मुत्पड़त यन पूर्णमाई विश्वसिकिन्न इवन स्टेप अप यद्दा पत्तन देवते आराधिकन्न मन्नोर्क देवसानित्य फील
Praise God
यन विन्न बरे देवते आराधिकन्न ओल्ला आग्रहतल मन्नोर्क एन्नो फील एशु ने फील स्तोत्र इन्हीं रात नम्मुल पाड़िवोल इंग्लिश पाटी पड़िवोल He never stopped Working
Praise God
He never यन योर गारियम गुड बरे He never stops talking also
Praise God
इन्हीं रात्रि एत्र बेर देवजनम गलकन्न आन वन्निकिन्न यन्ना इन्निश्चम नम्मुर देवाल्मा विर्णिकाल मुम्पे समसारिच्छन्न बोतिय स्तोत्र देवजनम गलकन्न आन नल्ला गारिय God is going to speak I'm telling you one thing देवजनम देवम परिशुत्थाल्माव नम्मुर उरु समसारिच्छन्न
Praise God
इन्हीं रात्रि नम्मुक विक्तिवरमाय तन्दिकिन्न परिशुत्थाल्माव ने करिमति दियोत नम्मु स्तोत्र चय दाट आरु समसारिकन्न इल्लेल्य He's worshiping us. When he prays, he's worshiping us. When we have problems, he's helping us. I'm here, I'm here. I'm here, I'm here. When he says, we're going to change. I worship him for all of our lives. I worship him for all of our lives. I arrange it, I arrange it. I worship him for all of our lives. Because he's coming, he's coming. Because today, we worship him for all of our lives. I worship him for all of our lives. We worship him for all of our lives. I worship him for all of our lives. In the name of the Lord, I worship him. I worship him for all of our lives. Today, I want to say, I worship him for all of our lives. I worship him for all of our lives. At next morning, I worship him for all of our lives. How many, I worship him for all of our lives. Praise God. Hallelujah. Open your hearts in the presence of God. The Lord, today, I worship him. How long, your words, worship. I worship him. I worship my work. I worship my work. My work, today, hallelujah. I worship him for all of my work. Worship. If you have a work, I worship him. I worship him for all of our lives. Today, I worship him for all of our lives. I worship him for all of our lives. I worship him for all of our lives. Because, whether you minimize it or not, I worship him. I worship him for all of our lives. I worship him for all of our lives. Because, without any further introduction, we worship him, we worship him. I worship him for all of our lives. I worship him for all of our lives. Worship. What you mean, worship. I worship him, I say, I worship him. I worship him, I worship him. Today, we worship him for all of our lives. I worship him for all of our lives. I worship him for all of our lives. Today, I worship him for all of our lives. Today, I worship him for all of our lives. Praise God. I worship him for all of our lives. 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 Today, we worship him for all of our lives. After break, we share, everyone, everyone, none of them, hallelujah. None of them, who came, I worship him. Today, I worship him for all of our lives. Anywhere, where you go, I worship him. I say, I worship you. You touch his heart. Praise God. Today, we worship him for all of our lives. I worship him for all of our lives. Brother George John, we worship him. I worship him for all of our lives. We worship him for all of our lives. Today, we worship him for all of our lives.
Thank God for this beautiful night. Today, we worship him for all of our lives. Today, we worship him for all of our lives.
I once again thank God for this opportunity to be with all of you.
Today, we worship him for all of our lives. I worship him for all of our lives. All of you, in the name of the Lord.
All the respected servants of God and all the children of God who are gathered here, I want to greet you all.
Today, we worship him for all of our lives.
And last night also, God enabled us to hear from the word and to meditate from it.
Today, I worship him for all of our lives.
And this night also, I want to share from the word of God with you all.
Raja Shambal Pastor, Priya Paul Pastor, Radheshwari Pastor, Brother Neeshan, I worship him. I worship him for all of our lives.
And I thank God and greet all the pastors who have gathered here.
The Lord's word, a random type word, worship.
And there are a few different types of the ministry from the word.
Worship.
And there is the ministry about salvation.
Deliverance. That is worship.
And then there is a word and ministry about deliverance.
Worship.
And then there is the sermons on various teachings in the word.
Worship.
And then there are also the preaching which gives us hope in the word.
Guidance. According to the guidance that the sermons of God receive, they preach from these various different types of ministries.
And we all know that all these different types of ministries also have its own importance. But the ultimate goal of all these different types of ministries and the preaching is that the hearers would ultimately reach eternity. And the reason for that is all of us who are here did not come to the Lord for a material blessing. And I firmly believe that none of you came to the Lord believing that because I came to Pentecost, I will get a new house. And I firmly believe and understand that you did not come to the Lord or to the Christian faith knowing that I will get a new job.
Worship.
But would you not get all those blessings and benefits from the Lord? Definitely, there is a chance that you would receive it. And if you come to the Lord, if you come to a prayer meeting, then you would receive the healing in your body, but that's not the sole reason for which you have come to the Lord.
Worship.
And if you ask, you know, would I not receive a healing in my body, then yes, there is a chance for that. But we cannot say for sure that everyone is going to receive a healing because several of us sitting here are also sick in our bodies. And there is a possibility that you would receive these blessings and deliverances, but the reason why you came to this faith is because you had the firm belief that there is a heaven. And we all have various beliefs. We believe in Jesus, we believe in heaven and in hell, and that there is a judgment that is awaiting us, and we would be judged according to what we do while we live in this world.
Hallelujah.
Amen. And we all know from our life experiences, seeing our forefathers, our, our parents, that they lived up to seventy, eighty, ninety, or maybe up to hundred, and we also would feel that we are about to leave from this world when that time comes. And with the education and the wisdom that we have, we have secured our life to a good extent. And most of you are sitting here, you have secured your life to a good, to a good extent. And because you have taken care of your life here on earth, I don't have to say anything more about it. And if you haven't done it, then you have to use your ability, your capacity to make sure that everything is taken care of, and I don't think I need to give you any guidance to do that. But what I want to talk to you this night is about another life. And it is not a life that ends with eighty years, and the Bible says that it is an eternal life. And you are all smart, and you, with your ability, you have secured your eighty years of life here on earth, you have good cars and good houses, and you take care of your health, and you have done all that very well.
Worship.
And after your eighty years of life here on earth, somebody else would take it all. And most probably, it's not your children who is going to benefit from it, it's somebody else who probably would take it. And typically, it's a nursing home which takes away the, the savings that you have. And that's not my topic tonight, but I'm glad that you have secured your life here on earth. But what I want to speak to you tonight is about eternity, the eternity, the time that we are going to spend in a different place.
Worship.
And that's what I want to share with you tonight.
Worship.
Do you decide to hear about it?
Worship.
And oftentimes, these kinds of messages are not accepted by the hearers. And in many places, I have seen that when I don't speak about deliverances and healing and about our financial growth, people do not very well accept it. But I don't know why, but the Holy Spirit had prompted me that when, when I was coming here to this country, that this is the only topic that I should speak about. And as a visiting pastor, your joy is my joy as well.
Worship.
And when you rejoice, that makes us rejoice as well. And when I give you a prophetic word or when I say something and when you rejoice, I would also rejoice with you.
Worship.
But when I say this kind of message, none of you are going to be happy.
Worship.
And when you don't become happy, then it, it hurts us as well.
Worship.
And you know very well, it affects us in many different ways.
Worship.
But the Lord has told me that even if you make them worry a little bit, that's fine, you have to speak this. And what I want to speak to you tonight is a very important topic.
Book of Revelation, chapter fourteen, verse thirteen. Worship.
Revelation, chapter fourteen, verse thirteen.
Worship. 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 Okay.
Then I heard a voice from heaven saying to me, right? Blessed are the dead who die in the Lord from now on. Yes, says the Spirit, that they may rest from their labors and their works follow them. And it is from this scripture portion that I want to give a message to you. And the last book in the Bible is the book of Revelation. And the author of the book of Revelation is John the Apostle, whom I consider to be the oldest among all the authors in the Bible. And when John writes this book, he was ninety-six years old. And he sees his revelation in a very specific place. And John is seeing this vision, this revelation in an island called Patmos, which is a dark island. And Apostle John, he was in a trance three different times, and he gets into heaven and he sees these different visions. And three chapters are the revelation about the churches which existed at that time. And in the chapter four, he was asked to get up there, and whatever is going to happen from now on, I'm going to show it to you. And the three chapters, it are, those are the things which happens here on earth. And from chapter four onwards, those are the things which are yet to happen in the future.
Worship.
And he sees visions about heaven.
Worship.
And he's wishing about the worship in heaven.
Worship.
And he sees the cry of John. And he sees a lamb, even though he is slain, he is still standing up there. And what kind of revelation is that, that even though the lamb is slain, he is still standing up there? And up till chapter fourteen, he's seeing various different revelations. And while he was seeing all these different visions, he heard a sound from heaven, write this down.
Worship.
And it is a word from heaven saying, write. Blessed are the dead who die in the Lord from now on. And the reason why it is, this word came from heaven is because there is something very special for those who die in Christ prepared in heaven. And the reason why these people are counted as blessed is because there is something very special about those people who die in Christ.
Hallelujah.
Amen.
Hallelujah.
Amen.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Worship. Somebody shout, hallelujah. Hallelujah. Praise the Lord.
Hallelujah. And what we read this here is, is explanation of a man who is blessed. In my days of ignorance, I've thought about various people that they are very blessed. I have counted many of you sitting here as that you are very blessed. But it is only after I came here that I realized that I am more blessed than all of you.
Worship.
Many people have a lot of money, but they don't have any peace.
Worship.
And we just cover up all the weaknesses that we have. And I come from a very poor background. My father and my mother, they were day laborers. And the days when I didn't even have a good pair of clothes to wear, I would look at the people who were wearing good clothes and say that, oh, they are very blessed. But then, when I examined and came to know about them very closely, I realized that they are not really blessed. And while I was traveling the other day, I, I heard a lottery seller, he is saying that tomorrow's blessed person is you. And, and the first prize for the lottery is twelve million rupees, and one, one of the people I know very well got that first prize.
Worship.
And I thought, oh, he's a very blessed man. And it's, the, 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 the next one month of his life, after that, he told me, oh, it would have been great if I never got this prize. And since the day that he got this prize money, there are hundreds of people queuing up in front of his house to get the money. And he ran away from that place and started living in a rental place, and still, these people followed him there. And at the end, he couldn't even live in his own house, and he had to live somewhere very far away. And the, and the money that he is having, it is draining, he is giving it out, and it is not increasing, but it's only coming down.
Worship.
And then, in order to live, he bought an auto rickshaw. And, and people would get in his auto rickshaw and get out without paying any money because they all know that he is a millionaire. And, and then I realized this thing that he is not really a blessed man. And would you be able to show me one person whom I can count as blessed? And the other day, I, I read in the newspaper about a man who purchased an airport on his own, that he, he fell face down to the ground.
Hallelujah. Hallelujah.
Even when we count many people as blessed, they are not really blessed, but the Bible says, blessed are those who die in Christ. What is the kind of blessedness that is being mentioned here?
Worship.
What is that blessed state? So we turn to Revelation, chapter twenty-two. And there, we read about another place, another country.
Hallelujah.
And he showed me a pure river of water of life, clear as crystal, proceeding from the throne of God and of the Lamb. In the middle of its stream, and on either side of the river was a tree of life. And it bore twelve fruits, each tree yielding its fruit every month. The leaves of the tree were for the healing of the nation. And in the verses following, it says that then there is no more curse, no more sin, there is no more death, and we would be with him forever. Hallelujah. They shall see his face and his name shall be on their forehead.
Hallelujah.
Shall we praise him this morning, that in, in eternity, the greatest blessedness that we would have is that we are going to live with him forever.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Praise the Lord.
Hallelujah.
Worship.
I thought you would all praise him this night. When I said that you would be able to dwell with him forever, I thought you would greatly rejoice.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah. In the business of our life, oftentimes we forget about eternity. In the midst of all the business of our life, taking care of our children and cooking, our job and everything else that we do on earth, we often forget about that eternal land. I don't know whether you even think about the journey towards that eternal land, about our life on that eternal land. And as a humble minister of the world, I want to stand before you and connect your mind with eternity. And I don't care what kind of rustle you give to the message that I give to you. And back in the days, when I preach a message, I would think that people would give good report and that I would get more meetings. I don't know whether you all are giving the proper importance to eternity. And back in the days, the saints of God, they had this great joy and hope about eternity. And in the Nerkoq meeting, I spoke from the Book of Hebrews. And the saints, mentioned in the Book of Hebrews, they have really shaken my mind. And we have read the Bible cover to cover, five different times or even more, but the people in Hebrews, they didn't even have the Bible to read. And the people who did not even read the Bible even once, they were ready to be martyred for Christ. And they did not even want a deliverance from anything, they just wanted to face death. And can we even think about that? And when we go to a doctor for a headache and they say that you have to take an MRI, we would meet another ten doctors to make sure that, well, it's nothing critical and that we are not going to die. And these are the kinds of people at those times, they are saying that I don't even need a deliverance, I just want to face death. And what is this excitement to meet death? Why is it that they are saying that I just want to die? And they would tell me, oh pastor, I don't want to live here on this earth, but what I want is a resurrected life and to spend time eternal with Christ. And I hope and pray that the hope of eternity would fill all your hearts tonight. And some of you, some of them, they were even cut with a saw. Would we be able to even think about such a situation where we are going to be cut into two with a saw? And the kind of punishments at those times where some people were even clothed with the skin of various goats and they were put in the hot sun so that they would be crushed by the heat and they would all die in that heat. Does any one of you here think that because I came to America, I don't want heaven, I am very happy here? And some of them, they wandered in the jungles and on the mountains. And in order to reach eternity, these people, they are wandering in the jungles, in the forests, in the mountains and the wilderness along with their children, but think about us, we don't even want to come to church. Oh dear brethren, somebody has to come and correct you of the mistakes that you're doing in your life. And the Lord is giving you this message so that you would repent and you would return back to him. Praise you Lord, hallelujah. And I'm really worried about some of you. And the Bible also says about such people, it was good, it would be good if such a man was not even born. And there's a testimony about a man that it would have been good if he was not born. And because we are not paying attention, we don't even know whether the Lord is saying such a testimony about you. And we don't even know whether the Lord has repented that we were born and that we are here in this country. And they wandered in the wilderness and in the jungles and in the deserts for one reason, to reach eternity. And you know one thing, that there is dryness in the spiritual realm. And there is an extraordinary dryness in the spiritual realm. And there are certain things that are kept our spiritual life in bondage. And somewhere you are trapped in your life and you have to recognize what it is. And the spirit of God who has sent me and I stand here and speaking to you, you might think that I am a fool, but yet I'm saying this, that do not restrict what God can do in your life and do not measure what he can do for you in your life. And I don't know, but I think that it could be the money that we have that is drawing us away from the Lord. Or is it the systems in this country? And one thing you should recognize is that even if a crow takes a shower, it is not going to become a crane. A crow can never become a crane. And don't be fooled and you should also tell your children that even if they speak in the American accent, they are still Indians. We be able to praise God. And I know this is not what you are expecting, but this is what I want to tell you. And back in the days, there were servants of God who would preach boldly about eternity and they would correct you, but how long has it been since he heard such a message? And I am telling you all this because I love you and more than I love you, Jesus loves you so much and that's why you are hearing this. And the Bible says that there is a life beyond your eighty years of age here on earth. And there are two eternities. And one is hell and the other is heaven. And the only way that you can go to heaven, the only assurance for you to go to heaven is that when you die, you die with the Lord. Shall we praise him together, hallelujah. And if you want to die with Christ, you have to first know who is Christ. And then you have to recognize how to die in Christ. In a few minutes, we are going to think about this and then we would pray. And first of all, we have to be convinced who is Christ. Genesis chapter three and verse fifteen is the first place in the Bible where Christ is introduced. And I will put enmity between you and the woman and between your seed and her seed, he shall bruise your head and you shall bruise his heels. And Adam, who had sinned and lost the glory of God and now standing there perplexed, now God is coming down to him and in the midst of the conversation, he is telling him, I will put enmity between you and the woman and between your seed and her seed. Even though the name Jesus is not mentioned there, we know very well that it is mentioned about Jesus. Yeah, I would like to speak to you about Adam and Eve. And I don't know how long, but Adam and Eve, their family, they spend very peacefully for a long time. And can you think about the life in the garden of Eden, it's just the husband and wife and they are spending time together. And there is no tension for them. And it is such a blessed time there in the garden that they are able to spend time together and with all the animals there. And it's not just that, in the evening, God himself would come down and he would spend time with Adam and Eve. And every evening, God, the great God would come down to the garden and spend time with them. But in one day, all of this changed. And God told only two things to Adam, one is that you have to keep this garden and number two, you have to work in this garden. And you have to keep a garden, this garden and also you have to work here. And you have to keep the garden, you have to work in the garden and also you should not eat of the fruit of the tree which is in the center of this garden, but other than that, you can do anything else, but we who are living in this country, we have several restrictions in life. And about Adam, I understand that he was a good worker. And he works very well. But he did not keep the garden very well. And the reason why I say that is that if he had kept the garden very well, then he would have known that the serpent is speaking to his wife Eve. And his wife is texting the serpent and he did not even know about it. And at night and day, he is working very hard, but he is not keeping, he is not guarding his house. And I give all credit to Eve. And the garden of Eden is not a very small garden, it's a big garden and she, Eve is now at the center of that garden. And it would have taken maybe two months for her to come to the center of the garden.
At least two months.
At least two months to get there. It's not that easy to find the very center of a big garden. And it is a problem from old for women that even you say that you should not know something, they would make all effort to know that. And in order to get a secret, they would make many phone calls. And they would go to any extent to get to know that secret. And she ate and gave to Adam and they both ate and their eyes were open. And they, they realized that they are naked and when God came down at that evening, they started to hide them. And Adam and Eve, who are now standing there defeated, God is calling them, Adam, where are you? And because I am naked, I hearing your voice, I am now hiding. And who told you that you are naked? Did you eat the fruit that I asked you not to eat? And if you are naked, then that means that you did not obey what I asked you to do. And just when Adam said that he is naked, God knew the reason for that. And to Adam, God told that I am going to send someone to deliver you and me and that is going to be Jesus. Hallelujah, you and I who were destined to hell to spend time with Satan and his group, Jesus, he came down himself to the earth and saved us all and would you praise God for that?
Hallelujah.
Oh, we thank you for your love and your kindness towards us.
We worship you Lord.
Hallelujah.
We worship you Lord.
Jesus, we worship you.
Hallelujah.
Shall we think about the depths of his love towards us and praise him this night? And in order to fathom the depths of God's love towards us, we have to go deeper into the world. And right when God realized that they had sinned, there is a solution given to them. And I, I, I asked God, I told God that, oh, you prepared Jesus right away for us. And I thought that God prepared Jesus right then at that time. And but in, in, in the book of Corinthians, Paul, the apostle says that Jesus was prepared not at that time when sin entered the world, but before the creation of the world, Jesus was prepared for us. In Corinthians, we read that before the creation of the worlds, that Jesus was prepared for us. Before these worlds were created, Jesus was prepared for us. Even before the worlds were created, Jesus was prepared for us. Well, do you know the reason it is for our glory? And I asked, oh, Adam already has a glory. And God knew very well that even though Adam was created with glory, that glory would be lost one day. And he, God knew very well that there is a possibility and that's why he asked him to keep the garden. And in, in a garden where there are only two people living, who has to guard whom? And who should be guarded here? And even before we all, man entered into this world, there were certain creatures on this earth and that is the angels which are fallen. These, we have to understand one thing, that the world was not created for us initially, but rather for the angels, but they did not keep their domain, they were fallen. And now God removed them and, and he created man so that we can live here on earth and God knew very well that the enemy, the Satan is going to enter again into this earth and he, he would make us lose our salvation. And it's a Bible explanation that it is for the angels that the earth was created. And they existed here on earth. And, and Lucifer, who was here on earth, would go into the heavens and say, the Lord of hosts, he is holy, 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 and then one day he fell. And the one who was made of gold, God removed him and he made us made of clay to reign here on earth and understand that the enemy is always against those who reign here on earth. And one thing, it will be back in the days and even today, it is always against the children of God that the enemy always finds. And the reason is because the enemy was taken away from his domain and we are now able to reign in his place. And the enemy never wants us to reign here on earth. And he never wants us to live here in peace. He doesn't want us to live in peace with the Lord. Hallelujah. Shall we lift up our holy hands and praise him? And the first place in the Bible where Jesus is presented to us is in the book of Genesis. And all through the Bible, from that on, we see Jesus. And the, the seed of the woman, he is a silent character in the book of Genesis. And in the book of Exodus, we see the Passover lamb. And in the book of Leviticus, we see Jesus as a perfect holy priest, a high priest. And then in the book of Numbers, we see as the, the, the serpent which was raised. And in, in the book of Deuteronomy, we see as a prophet. And in the book of Joshua, we see Jesus as a commander of the army. And in the book of Judges, we see as a righteous judge. And the book of Ruth, we see him as a redeemer. And from Genesis to Malachi in the Old Testament, we see Jesus all through those words. And after Malachi, we see a dark age of four hundred years where there is no word of God. And I asked God, why didn't you speak these four hundred years? Are you with me? Shall you, please lift up your hands. You all are here. And for the next four hundred years, God is not speaking at all. And even in worship, we cannot hear the word of God. And people are asking, why aren't you speaking to us? I don't want to speak to you. Why is it that you don't want to speak to us? And God responded and said that if the, the authorities of the world wouldn't even be pleased by the sacrifices that you are giving to me. And the people in the world would not be pleased with the things, the sacrifices that these people are bringing into the temple. Are you with me? And when you stand before an official here in this country, you would stand with great awe and reverence of them. And I, I, I recognize one thing that when I came here, that, that the believers are even greater than God himself. And from your body language and your attitude, I can understand that you are coming here with an attitude saying that I did not come to receive anything, but whatever you want to speak, why don't you just speak to me? And as if God, God has something to gain by taking you to heaven. A, a, as if God, God is saying that I prepared a great heaven for all of them and these people, they don't even want to come, so let me just force and take them there. Are you sad hearing this? And I don't know the kind of education that you are expecting in a preacher and I don't know what kind of education that Elijah had. I've gone to sixteen different countries. And, and I greatly grieve in my heart when I speak these messages. And God said that I am not going to speak to these people because they are bringing the sacrifices which they wouldn't even offer to the officials in this country. We have to examine ourselves about the worship that give to God. And you have to self-evaluate about the worship that you give to God. Is God pleased in the praises that you are offering to him? Do, do you recognize the pain that I have in my heart? Do you even think about whether God is, is pleased in the worship that you are giving him? And God said, I don't want to talk to these people. And for four hundred long years, God did not speak to them. And there is no worship. And after four hundred years, there was a word that they received, oh brood of wipers, who told you to get away from the judgment that is to come and that was the words of John. An ordinary man in the wilderness crying out, oh brood of wipers. What kind of man is he? And he is calling those people as his sons, the children of the Satan. And he is calling the Jewish people gathered in front of him, you are the children of Satan. And he is calling them, oh children of Satan. And you have to bear fruits for righteousness. And they all came to be baptized. And there were many people who came to be baptized and there was also the one who was being prophesied in the book of Genesis and he also came to be baptized. Let me tell you this now, that it doesn't matter how long ago you received the prophetic word from God, it is, it might be so long ago, but you, he is still a faithful God and he is faithful and just to fulfill that.
Hallelujah.
And it doesn't matter how many years have passed, God whom you serve is faithful and just to fulfill that for you. And he came down. And he came in a majestic way. And for thirty-three and a half, thirty years, he, he was submitted to his parents. And the last three and a half years, he did ministry. And there are extraordinary things that the Lord did in those three and a half years. And the ministry, he started in a house which was about to perish. And the ministry of Jesus started in a house which was about to be destroyed in the, in the, in the house at Cana. And if there is one, one leader who never gave a condolence and that would be Jesus. And we all say, as pastors, we say many condolences. And if, if somebody dies, we know that there will be a lot of people, people who know that person and know, doesn't even know that person. And if somebody dies, we know that there will be a lot of people, people who know that person and doesn't even know that person, come to give condolence. And some people don't even know whether it is a man or a woman who had died. And because we are preachers, we would also pray that, you know, whatever I have prepared, let not the other people who are saying before me, let them not share that same. And in his three and a half years of ministry, he went for three different funerals, and he did not have to say a condolence, but he raised them all. And he said, Talita Kumi, which means daughter, rise up. And he said, Lazarus come out, and within seconds, he came out. Hallelujah, hallelujah. The Nazarene who can raise people from death, he is here this night, and would you believe that? And the presence of the one who healed a man who was sick for eighteen years and a woman who was sick for twelve years, his presence is here this evening. Shall we lift up our hands and praise Him? And the man who is a healer, but we read in the Bible, his power has not diminished even a bit. And God wants to touch some people who are gathered here this night. And God is telling me that I want to touch certain people who are gathered here this night. And certain things that you're struggling for many years, God wants to touch those situations this night. Hallelujah, God wants to heal certain individuals, the powers of darkness is going to be defeated tonight.
Jesus.
Hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah.
Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus.
Hallelujah. Shall we lift up our hands and praise Him? And those three and a half years of his ministry were filled with extraordinary miracles. And at the end of the three and a half years of ministry, Jesus, He bore the sins of all mankind, and He died on the cross. I don't have time to describe about the death of Jesus. And it is only Jesus who was an innocent man who had to go through all that suffering to die. And Pilate said, I don't find any fault in him. And Judas Iscariot said that I betrayed the one who did not do anything wrong. And the wife of Pilate said that you should not get involved in that righteous man. And the thief who was crucified also said that this man did not do anything wrong. And in the history of mankind, there is only one man who is innocent, who had to go through all that pain and died, and it is all for our sake. And the Bible says that Jesus was beaten thirty-nine times in the back. And Jesus was asked to bear that heavy cross on His back all the way to Golgotha. And in the word says that while Jesus was put on that cross and while the cross was raised, he had to go through all that pain. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. And there were seven different sayings of Jesus from the cross, but the sixth saying is that it is finished. And what that means is that everything that I had to do for the salvation of mankind, I have completed it. O dear brother and dear sister, we who were destined to hell, Jesus accomplished our salvation for us from that cross. And everyone thought that he would not raise himself up from the dead, but on the third day, he rose from the dead. And he appeared before the disciples, and he ascended into the heavens, and today he is interceding for us up in heaven. But the Bible does not end with that, the Bible says that he is going to appear one more time for all those who are eagerly waiting for his coming. Do you believe in that tonight? And in the letter of Thessalonians, we read that the Lord shall descend with the shout and with the sound of the archangel and with the trumpet's sound of God. Those who are dead in Christ, they are blessed. We have to die in Christ. And in order to die in Him, we have to be first born in Him. And you had to accept Him, and that's how you become a child of God. And you had to live in Christ. And finally, you have to die in Christ. And you will not end up in hell, but rather you would reach the hope of all lives. And we would live with Christ. How many of you greatly desire that this night? Would you close your eyes tonight? I tried my best to connect your sincere hearts with eternity. And I did not want to speak anything lesser than that. And I was not asked to preach about those things which ends in eighty years. And if you don't receive that entrance into that eternal land, then we are of all mankind the most foolish. And even if you don't have anything else, you have to make sure that you are assured of your eternity. Would you commit yourself into God's hand? Would you be able to rise up?
One minute, mind of the Marat. Namia, Isilma, Pratiasa, Betchan. This is what our life is, this is what our practice is, we are the masters. We have a power, we pray, we pray. Hallelujah, pardon. I am a sister of a doctor. परसुदने एंड डू न्यान चर्नीडुबो ओरि निमिशमेंगिल निगल देवती ने सलतिल नाडच्या
शाल बी ऑल क्लोज योर आइस टुनाइन
न्यान ओरि वाक्य निगल काहि प्रार्थिक्य नाग्र
एंड आई वांट टू प्रेय फॉर यू
समर्पण सोजगमाया करंगल नोयर्थ बट्टमोकर्तावन दम्बाग
एस अट साइन अट समिशन वुड यू रेज़ योर हंस
विदावे न्यान निकुंजिंगल कुंडी प्रार्थिक
ओ लोर्ड आई प्रेय फॉर डी ईशु
ओरि सिसरोशक नन्न निलिल एंड डी मानस तुरम्न न्यान इवर यानिक्रिहिक्यो
एंड एस अन मिनिस्ट्र ऑफ़ डी वर्ड आई वांट टू ओपन अन माय हार्ट्स एंड आई वांट टू ब्लेस्ड थिम एंड इन डी बिस्नेस ऑफ़ आर लाइव हेल्प अस नॉट टू फॉरगेट लेट थिम नॉट फॉरगेट अबाउट हेवेन ओ वुड यू हेल्प अस ऑल
एश्विन नामतिल तने आकरणकल आडिच्या नम्मड़ा देवती नारायण
शाल बी अप अहंस एंड प्रेस सिम
प्लीज बी सीट ई अनिक्रहपट्या रात्रिकाई कर्तव्य डी संदेशम नम्मड़ा हृदयंगले लेतिक्यो मनिशन नम्मणिशनुड़े संसारिक्यो निदेव देवती नमात्रमे ओरि हृदयतुड़े संसारिक्यो निदेव आकर्तित्यम इन्हीं रात्रि परिषुताल्मा वेटड़द नम्मड़ा हृदयंगल नम्मड़ा अगत्य मनिशने वन डी स्टेरोपी वाल ई संदेश ओक्कन नम्मकेल्लारक अर्यावन व्हाट्स न्यू बट इट हस टर्ड अस आर हार्ट्स प्रेस गॉड ओरि संदेशत्तन डी मेसेज दान नम्मल भाग्यमल्लोरान प्रेस गॉड जीवतिल रोगन गानुम भारन गानुम विषमन गानुम प्रतिगुलिंगल गानुम कष्टन गानुम नष्टन गानुम ई पैकेजल ओक्कन नम्मल पोयोरुम पोइकुंडिक्यो नोरुम पोइटिल्लगिल पोगु प्रेस गॉड नोबड़ीस एक्सेंटेड याना इधर डमात्य नम्मल भाग्यमल्लोर करिमति देवती नम्महोत अपड़दिक्या इधर डमात्य नम्मल भाग्यमल्लोर आस्तो कारणम रेक्षिदाव ने नम्मक कंडमुट्या भाग्यम इट्स नॉट आस बट इस सॉस इस मेट अस इन डी डार्केस्ट आवर्स ऑफ़ आर लाइव प्रेस गॉड नम्मड़ा जीवतिल एल्लाम नर्नुनुड़न प्लाल्ला कर्तव्य नम्मले कंडमुट्या इरिट्यन डन अनिफ़ांग प्रत्याश इलायरुन पो ओरि वाड़ियोंड़ो नुपहरपट्टिरुन पो नम्मा इम्बशब्दंगल कुंडयोमेर वरिति स्तोत्र आशब्दमान रेक्षिदाव डी शब्द प्रेस गॉड आशब्दम नम्मल नित्य दवरे गुणुड़न कृष्टवल जीविक्यो नम्मर्ना नम्मड़ा भाग्यम अत्रभयुमक्यो कृष्टवल जीविक्यो नर्कमात्रमे कृष्टवल मारिक्यो निदेव अवर चर्कन वीडुम कृष्ट तन्ने विरुद्ध अदनाय स्तोत्र न्यान बोघन ओरि सब्स्टिट्यूट ओरा नयाला एशु आयक्यो नम्मल अर्यन एशु बोघन न्यान सौरगतिल पोघुनु हालेलुया आस्तानत भूमि न्यान आर्यायक्यो परिषुताल्मा आयक्यो याना तन्दजनते सोंदजनते चर्कवा कृष्ट तन्ने आविर कैन यू से आई अपर नम्मल करिमति बोघन न्यान भाग्यमल्लोरान प्रेस गॉड न्यान भाग्यमल्लोर ने इन्नत संदेशम भाग्यमल्लोर संदेश न्यान कुदंदिक्यो निदेव न्यान कोरपदन ओरपोड निगले कुंडो निदेव नम्मड़ा देवती ने स्तोत्रचय देवजनमे इस अट डोर नम्मल इनी बिजारिक्यो नुल्लो समय अद्यमिल्ल अवन वादिक्यो स्तोत्र इन्हीं रात्रि शब्दंगेट तिरिचरिनोर्कायन देवत्र स्तोत्र समाधानतिल प्रयानुलो रुदूद नम्मल तन्ने वालिट्यूनुल समयमाय स्तोत्र इन दिस आइज व्हाट वी वर डूइंग वी वर रिवैल्यूटिंग आदर्स प्रेस गॉड बट दिस इस अन आवर डी होली स्पिरिट इस प्रिपेयरिंग अस टू एक्सामिन आर लाइव्स जीवतिन्डे शून्यदले कंडबडिक्यो कुरवले कंडबडिक्यो परिषुताल्मा वंडा पूर्णत एनु लेबिक्यो निल्लन अदन कंडबडिच्या स्तोत्र देव वजनतम्बल समर्पिच्या आराध्यनिक्य वेला उड़त्या स्तोत्र इन्नम्मल विश्वासत्ताल आराधिक्यो मुन्दोसंगल कर्तव्य डबरवायन नान्गिल नम्मल अमने मोहमोमाय कंडाराधिक्यो स्तोत्र अदिन्ड रिहर्सली दोसंग नम्म कड़ड़कड़ा सौरगतिचल्ल बारातन नम्म कुरसार प्राइस आयक्यो न्यान बीड़ बोघन सौरगतिचल्ल बोल आरातन ओ इधर नुआरातन भूमि लेंड रिहर्सल भाग्यमल्लोरकमात्रे उड़त्यू अदनाय न्यान देवत्र स्तोत्र एल्लारकु आराधिक्यो निदेव एल्लारकु स्तुदिक्यो निदेव भाग्यमल्लोरकमात्रे करिमति बोघन भाग्यमल्लोरकमात्रे एश्विन कृष्टोलोन आपाक्यो वाल प्रेस गॉड इन्नी संदेशमाय इधर नम्मड़ा उल्लिक्त बोघन इन्नकेट्या संदेशम केट्या बोघन ने परिषुताल्मा नम्मल प्रार्थिक्यो स्तोत्र